All right, good morning, everybody. We will start this October 12th committee of the whole meeting. Call to order, please.
Here.
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 Here. All right, first item on the agenda before us this morning is a discussion for a letter of interest from the Ferguson School District for the Kirkbride Park, and Andrew's gonna take that off.
Good morning, members of the committee. Hope everybody's doing well. Kind of a out-of-the-ordinary request, not common business for us here this morning, but maybe a fun way to start the day. As the Adams and McKinley School Buildings creep over ninety years old now, the school district is starting to look at what the future options might be for replacing those buildings and a new elementary school. And so they've been working for several months to identify a potential location for a proposed school, and through a handful of conversations with them, they've ultimately landed on the site of Kirkbride Park being their preferred site for a proposed elementary school. It's approximately fourteen point eight acres, all of the area in front of the Circle Drive as well towards Fur Avenue. Within the letter of interest that Superintendent Drake submitted, it shows those parcels. There's technically, I think, two different parcels, but all contiguous in all kind of one area that they're looking at. A few things, if the council is interested in pursuing this with the school district, everything is contingent and conditioned upon a successful bond referendum. The school would have to obviously pass a bond referendum to build the school, and they're only interested in the site if there is going to be a school located on that site. They really like the location in terms of being centrally located, being fairly close to their other schools, the bus company, and some of those things that stand out about the site. I recognize that this is an odd request. I had some conversations earlier this week that, you know, being this is the first time the city council's hearing about this, and the staff is suggesting perhaps we look at a purchase agreement, there may be other steps that the council wishes to take in between. I didn't think it was appropriate for us to start at the park board or the planning commission because I didn't know if the council had an appetite to talk about this or to sell this property. I didn't think it was appropriate to waste anybody's time with those discussions, but if the council is on board with moving in this direction, I think it wouldn't hurt to get feedback from the park board and from the planning commission and have additional dialogue around this as we fully vet this concept and this idea. So I'll just leave that lingering here before we discuss it. And then also, just to note, if we do move towards a purchase agreement, again, it would be contingent upon a successful referendum, and there'll be some work that has to be done to determine what a purchase price may look like. We're trying to determine, because there were bond funds used from the state of Minnesota on this property, any money or proceeds from the sale will go back to the state of Minnesota. They will not be kept by the city. So it's in the schools and the city's best interest to have that dollar amount as low as possible because nobody locally is going to retain that, and it'll be coming from our taxpayers. So we're working with Joel Carlson, our lobbyist, and some of the folks at the state to determine how a purchase price must be set, if we have to do an appraisal, or if it can be just an agreed-upon price, or if we need to introduce potentially legislation that would set a price which would then allow us to drive that number down. So I don't need to get into the weeds on that today, but I say that to portray the fact that even if we move towards a purchase agreement, we have several months worth of work ahead of us just to be able to define the terms of what that purchase agreement entails. So it's not going to be a quick process. You know, for the schools' purposes, I think they just need to know that there's an appetite and an interest to get there so they can begin planning for that location, and then whatever outreach is necessary. The one final piece that I'll mention before we have discussion is that this parcel is part of the campus historic designation, so it is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. We do not know today what the impact of this would be on the entire campus designation. We of course have to work through that with the state Historic Preservation Office, but there is the possibility, again, we don't know, we haven't worked through that process yet, that if we were to move in this direction, it could delist the entire campus from historic designation. Now, I don't, I would hope that wouldn't be the outcome, knowing that, you know, SHPO and others have a shared goal of seeing the building redeveloped, and knowing that those historic tax credits are key to doing that, but I think we have to mention it as a possibility because we haven't ruled that out. So that's where we're at, looking for discussion and some direction on what she wants staff to do next, and if there's anything we can give back to the school district in terms of feedback or where we're at with things.
Well, thank you, Andrew, for that update this morning. I'm sure there'll be some discussion, so we'll just kind of open up and go ahead, Brent.
Well, I thought about this a lot last night, and I will not be in favor of moving forward with this at all. There's been a few different potential projects that the city's wanted to do, and every time we bring up historic, they bring up the Kirkbride site, it's historic tax credits and dealing with SHPO. So then why should it be any different with the school district? I mean, even when it comes down to the water park, that was the preferred site, if I remember correctly, and nobody wanted to deal with SHPO and having to deal with this thing. So now we're going to be taking away a section of Roosevelt Park that people are using over there and selling a piece of property that the city owns that we could have put this water park on, especially since we already blew the money and we've already brought up sewer and water with the money we got from the state up to that site, which makes it readily available. So if it's something we could have used in the first place, and we didn't because of the historic tax credits, then I do not believe we should be selling it to the school for the same reason.
Well, I'll maybe just add, I was on the aquatics committee, and we obviously, we had an external consultant, I don't recall exactly, Kirkbride was up there, but it wasn't the, by their ranking, it wasn't the number-one scoring matrix site, so for that being said, it was up near the top three, I think, based on scoring, but I, I would, I look at it maybe through a different lens. I mean, we've had that for a very long time. Previous councils, current council, and future councils will be making decisions on the Kirkbride, and we've always had a, I think, a shared goal in trying to get redevelopment. Now, this is a little different, it's out in front, but I would be open to explore the path. I mean, I think we don't know enough today to say yes or no. If it jeopardizes the tax credits, that's a, I mean, we need to know that before we would say yes. So I, I would support going forward with trying to see how we can make it work, what does it look like, how does it affect current and future development up there, and is it something we can partner with? I think as a community, ever since we took it over, we had a huge opportunity for an entire campus up there, and I think you talked to a lot of citizens, and I think we did not execute very well on that option back in oh-six, or whenever that time was. So I would be in support of at least exploring the option and being open to work with SHPO, work with the school district, to at least see what the actual options and outcomes could be, but closing the door before it's even open, I think, would be short-sighted on our behalf.
I would make a motion that we explore this whole thing and see where, what we come up with, if we can do it or not, or at least dig into it and find out if it, if it's possible.
I would second.
Thank you. Now, I think we can discuss a little bit more if we want to. Anybody have, Scott, do you have any input or?
I was expecting Jim to ask for a work session.
Well, we can do that, too.
Okay. That probably would be a good direction to go. Yeah, I guess I'd like to make a few comments, too. The Regional Treatment Center Historic Campus Master Plan that we just completed a year ago specifically calls out the land, and as Andrew mentioned, as part of the campus, and I can quote from it, it says, "The park should remain green space in character, and no development of ball fields or other recreational infrastructure should be contemplated," and goes on to say that "A key aspect of the RTC campus are the multiple view sheds of the historic buildings, in particular, the main Kirkbride building. The importance of the campus grounds was reinforced when in 2016, the National Register of Historic Places expanded the 1986 campus boundary to include more of the land surrounding the RTC." So when you talk about this space, the land is part of the historic thing, and that's been pointed out. I just wanted to essentially document that pretty clearly. I think another piece of this, other than my first reaction being that this isn't a very good site for a school, personally, I don't believe it is. I think there's at least three other terrific sites for schools elsewhere around town that are better than this. But I think the whole process here is a little bit of a shortcut, and it illustrates the need that we have for a more completed strategic or comprehensive plan that says, as a city, this is what we'd like to see, and then the school district is involved with the city as we come to decisions like this. I think if the school district were to come to us and say, can we work together with you on locating a site and talking about this, that would be a good question. To come and ask for a purchase agreement, I think, is getting the cart before the horse, and is just really too big of an ask, and I think that they need to cool their jets just a little bit. This needs to be reviewed by the Economic Development and Land Use Committee, needs to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, Andrew mentioned the park board would certainly have a say. When we get a variance request from somebody that wants to put a shed in their backyard that goes for more scrutiny than this kind of a thing that comes up, you know, asking for a purchase agreement, then I just think this is too big of a jump. But I would support Jim's idea to go to a work session to at least, you know, talk with the school, get them in the same room. I think that would be great.
And maybe just to add, too, I also think we're missing a couple of council members, and I think in the past, I mean, this is a pretty big, has always been a, an important topic in our community, and I'd like to, you know, make sure we have everybody's input on it, so, you know, where it be, go ahead.
Well, I just want to, just, just for the record, not to dispute anything that Councilmember Kwame said, but just to clarify, I don't know if the school district necessarily is asking for a purchase agreement at this stage. That's, that's my language, quite frankly, because I, you know, I thought it was something that could accomplish what they're set out to do, and that's to secure the site, to be able to go to a referendum. All we got from the school district was the, the letter of interest that was submitted, and it doesn't necessarily ask for any action. So I just wanted to clarify that. The term "purchase agreement" is, is a term that I'm creating, not necessarily the school, so not to put words in their mouth, but I think and Jesper going in the same, you know, in the same direction, but that's my words, not theirs, so just to be fair.
And as you pointed out, I think, I mean, there's a need the school has, and they don't want to waste six months exploring that site if, if this entire council doesn't even want to explore it. So I think, to your point, I think there are other avenues that need to be explored as well, but if we're, we're the final stop, right? And if we're going to say no, then why go do all that work and time and energy? So I don't know what the council...
I think, I mean, I, I would sit with Justin in the sense that I think it's, it's worthy of exploring, but I think the first piece is SHPO. I mean, that's kind of phone call or an email, and if, if, if they support obviously what's been written previously, then there's no point in wasting any more time on it. But I think, you know, the school, the school needs to do something, and, you know, I think basically, at this point in time, we wouldn't be spending really any money, so it would just be exploratory conversations, so, and I think it's just in some of this, maybe, you know, we should have the whole council to kind of make the decision, but I think, I think we shouldn't just throw it out at this point. I think we should at least explore what SHPO says. If SHPO says you can't, then, then it's over.
Well, I mean, the council could, I'm not suggesting...
I know.
The council could say, that's fine, we don't care about the historic designation or the tax credits, and you can proceed. I just want you to know your options, I'm not suggesting...
I also think it would, I think if there's something happens up there, then there's a better chance of somebody developing the Kirkbride. I mean, you know, it's, it's been sat there for all this time, and, and nobody's developed it with a park in front of it. If all of a sudden there's more traffic up there, and there's more people up there, you know, maybe we stand a better chance of actually somebody coming on and developing it. You know, that would be quite a lot of tax dollars collectively going into it to put the school up.
Everything everybody's said is why I said let's explore it. I mean, it, it doesn't hurt anything to explore. We don't have to approve it after we get all the information back, but at least we've done our job and explored the possibilities of doing this.
So before us this morning, we do have a motion. In that motion, then, was it to explore, to a work session?
Yes.
So, Your Honor, here's what I'll do.
I don't know that we need a work session.
We, I mean, I think...
I think the school board should be involved in something, too.
But I think initially, we just have to find if, if SHPO is agreement, if SHPO, you know, if SHPO says no, then...
Then, then we're done.
Yeah.
We'll start that conversation with SHPO with the school, because one of the things they're going to ask is, you know, what does your site plan look like? So we'll have, well, in conjunction with the school, we'll start the conversation with SHPO, and then I think it, it may be a good idea to have a work session, just for you guys to be able to ask the school district questions, if nothing else, and, you know, understand more what their intentions are, and some of those things. So I'll, I'll work with the leadership of the school district to set up a work session, but also, in the meantime, start those conversations. I'm guessing it's not going to be a simple yes or no answer. They're going to analyze it, and they have to, you know, and they're probably not even going to give us an answer unless we formally submit something, but we'll, we'll work through that process.
My, my understanding is that, that the school board is not looking at using any of the land that's now used for Summerfest up there, so they've already looked at that part of it. I talked to one of the school board members the other day.
Yeah, and I think in some of the conversations I was a part of with the school district and the school board, you know, they're fully, they want to be, if, if this moves forward and everything is, is, you know, proceeding, they want to be as community-oriented as possible in terms of, you know, if they can still accommodate the ski trails, Summerfest, you know, any events in that space, depending on the layout of that, I think they're definitely interested in doing that. So I think we have our, our direction for now, and we'll, we'll circle back with, with all of you as soon as we have additional information to report, and then get a date scheduled to, to get the school board and the city council together.
All right, well, thanks for the update, and thanks for the discussion on that item.
Technically, we have a motion on the phone.
Well, the motion was, I thought, to, so do we want to redefine the motion, or are we good just to vote on the motion?
I think it was, you know, my perception...
To explore and, and to go to a work session.
Okay. You second that answer?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, well, if all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Item number two, City Project 5960, 2023 Street Reconstruction Utility Improvement Project, Brian.
Good, good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the council here. Before you is in regards to upcoming, next year's reconstruction project that staff's been evaluating. Before you right now, I'm currently proposing that looking at a portion of Linden Street and Summit Avenue, basically bounded from Broadway Avenue to Oak Street, and at the second segment on Mortal Street from First Avenue to Broadway Avenue, I've attached an exhibit with your memo for you. I don't believe we can get these on the projections, so my apologies. So similar to past reconstruction projects, we're looking to do, assess a portion of the street improvement, and this would be through the 429 process. Utility replacements will be funded through the appropriate enterprise funds, so therefore is what I'm requesting as well, we'll have to, because we're doing 429 special assessment, we have to initiate the preliminary engineering report, and because of that as well, I've also contacted Patch and Messner for their professional services for appraisal services, and they've also provided a proposal to me as well. So if acceptable, staff will begin the preliminary engineering report, and we'll be doing this in-house design, and we'll be doing the presentation to this council at a later date. So bear with me here, my recommendations are to, number one, initiate public improvements 5347, 5348, 5349, 7212, 7213, 7214, and 8227, 8228, and 8229. Second recommendation is to combine all these said PIs into a combined project 5960. I'm requesting the order of the preliminary engineering report for CP 5960, and to accept Patch and Messner's professional services proposal for appraisal services in a not-exceed amount of $9,000. And I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Are we able to do that in one motion? All of them? I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Krista gets that one. Being greedy this morning, getting them all in. Any other questions, discussion for Brian on this item?
One question. This is water, sewer, sanitary sewer, the whole shebang, as well as the, it's not just the mill and overlay, we're talking all the way down, everything under the streets.
We'd be looking, replacing full utility deconstruction as well.
It'll, it's timely. Summit and Laurel are in pretty bad shape.
Yep.
Among others, but got to start somewhere.
Correct.
I've been yelling about Summit for a long time.
All right, we have a motion before us, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion's carried. Do you guys like that on the consent agenda?
Sure.
I failed on the first one, is that, do we need to move that to the consent, or?
I think leave it up.
Okay, perfect, thank you, guys. All right, item number three, Brian, you're up again, City Project 5959.
Thank you. If we recall, recently, the council initiated Stanton Avenue Reconstruction Project and Public Improvement 5959, the extension, reconstruction of Stanton Avenue from Union Avenue to Broadway. Based on anecdotal evidence and historical counts, we believe the underlying soil beneath Stanton Avenue is very unsuitable soil, however, the extent is not known. Therefore, I contacted Terricon for geotechnical exploration services. In general, they'll do a, conduct a series of soil borers through the pavement, collect soil samples, prepare a geotechnical engineering report, and then provide recommendations in that report to mitigate some of these potential unsuitable soils. Secondly, like the prior project, we don't know the full estimates yet, however, I believe we're going to, a portion of the street will be assessed with this project as well. Therefore, we'll be doing the same, we'll have to do, I listed Patch and Messner for appraisal services to complement the 429 process. So at this time, I'm requesting to resolution accepting Patch and Messner's professional service proposal for appraisal services not to exceed amount of $11,000, and also a resolution accepting Terricon professional services proposal for geotechnical exploration in a not-exceed amount of $8,900. And I'll open up to any questions you might have.
As much as Summit needs it, this needs it even worse, so I would make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Brian? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion's carried. Would you guys like that on the consent as well?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, Downtown Riverfront Project Phase Two Update.
Yes, thank you again. Back in the September 19th city council meeting, there was a request for clarification on two items for the downtown Riverfront project, one being the utility hookups for the east side, east block, and the second one being some differences between the flow-through splashpad, splashpad system and the recirculating system. So to begin with, during the phase one, we consulted, we consulted food vendors regarding the number of utility hookups necessary for, to combine phase one and two project areas. Based on industry, industry standards, the number of parking stalls and event space, it was suggested that three hookups would be sufficient. Therefore, three hookups, utility hookups were installed in the phase one project area. We can certainly add another utility hookup to the east block, phase two project area, but we simply did not in the initial design, just based on, for budgetary reasons and cost savings. But I'd leave it up to the council if they want to direct myself and staff to explore, get a proposal request from Comstock for utility hookups for the east block, phase two area, so.
All right, well, thanks for that. I don't know how many activities you've had down there on the west block in terms of utility needs, but do we have any data showing...
I think it should be explored.
Data showing we need more?
Yeah, I think we should explore it and see what the cost would be.
Okay.
Where would you put it? I mean, I would say, I mean, it's like, where are we going to place it? Because it's not, I mean, the other one, we, you kind of have a building, and then you go...
Yeah. In this case, there's a building over that end, right, the new restroom building, and so having hookups on that building in similar way that you've got hookups on the first one would seem appropriate, and then having hookups along the street, similar to the ones on the current street, I think those two locations at least would be good. If there was a third one along by the alleyway, I suppose that would probably be plenty, but two or three locations seems like it would be worth doing.
We can...
I would say as well, before we go ahead, I mean, how, how many people have utilized the electric, and how many people have utilized water in the current marketplace? Just, you know, because putting water and electric on the far side of the parking lot obviously is going to be expensive around, you know, I'd rather see two on this side than, you know, one on that side that might be more expensive.
So data that I have currently is from farmer's market vendors pretty much exclusively, and so far, I have not seen any responses saying anyone's hooking up to the water. But many of them use electric, and we've had several events where we've had at least one food truck located at every single 50-volt hookup, so those are getting used. And what I'm envisioning for phase two would likely be a similar usage, so we maybe don't need water hookups for vendors necessarily in phase two, but having accessibility to some 50-volt by the building, by the street, by the alleyway would probably be, they'd probably be used.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I believe we have plenty of time to discuss this further as well. We have not had the pre-construction meeting yet for this phase two. I believe it would be starting next spring as well, perhaps mobilization, but we have plenty of time, so I just wanted to follow up based on previous council requests, so...
And based on the conversation and the information, I think it's, it's worth exploring to see of those all the way across the parking lot and cost, and we can make a decision at a later date how important, you know, the need is to have that for the facility itself.
We can do some outreach, too, and ask some questions of vendors, see what they want to use.
Go ahead, Brent.
Where on the alley are we talking? I mean, because everything that's going in is going to be right up by the river, why would there be to be one back by the alley?
We have one by the alley on phase one.
You do?
Yep, we do, and it has been used when that entire parking lot is, is shut down. It makes a nice enclosed, so you can have, you know, food truck over by the building, food truck by the alley, food truck on the end, so it's kind of...
Okay, so this is like after hours, because like, the biggest thing that concerns me is the parking over there for the senior center, if any of this is done during the days. I don't want to see any of those, you know, spots taken up where these people got to walk to get to that facility.
Right. Good point, duly noted. Okay, we good with that? We'll just, we'll get more information when we actually need to...
And I have one...
Second item for the full-through on the...
Yes.
Splashpad water.
Thank you. Yes, there are two types of splashpad systems. There are number one being a flow-through, and the second being a recirculating. In a flow-through system, the water from the splashpad drains into the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer, or can be captured and repurposed for irrigation. In a recirculating system, such as the one that we have provided in the phase two, this is an eco-friendly way to conserve water and operates more like a pool with tanks, chemicals, filters. Water used at the splashpad is filtered and chemically treated, stored in a tank, and then reused in the system throughout operation. This recirculating system does have a higher upfront cost and a flow-through due to equipment required to, as I just noted. The downtown Riverfront site does not have adequate space for a rain garden or retention basin to capture the used water from the irrigate, for irrigation purposes. Draining the water into the storm sewer and from there into the river is not a desirable outcome either. If a flow-through system were installed, it would need to drain into the city sanitary sewer. Depending on the programming, a flow-through splashpad system can easily top five million gallons of water usage in a season. The water used in the river feature area would continuously flow into the sanitary sewer while the river feature is operational. Not only would the city be using a significant amount of our own city water, but then it would also be having the extra costs of being treated in the city sanitary sewer system as well in the plants. The flow-through design provides colder water since it is continuously drawing from the city's water distribution system, which probably would not be very uncomfortable for users at, as well. So also additionally, local and regulatory agencies promote and enforce water conservation measures. In an effort to conserve water and considering a large variety of proposed water features, the continuously flowing waterfall features during normal operations, treatment costs, and user comfort, therefore, a recirculating system was preferred splashpad design in the downtown Riverfront Phase Two. So I'll just open up to any questions, and I'd like, I just want to note this is just a follow-up from previous requests.
Thanks, Brian. Good information to note. Thanks, Brian. Good information to note.
Um, one of the guys that I golf with was a, a park superintendent in Utah. And they had both, both, they had splash pads with the flow-through and with the recirculating. And he said the recirculating is by far more expensive. All the problems that they've had with it and upkeep maintenance was much more expensive after the fact. Just wanted to put that out.
Yeah, that was, kind of was, I wanted to know what the cost difference was between the two of them for operation and maintenance. I mean, that would be something to have in order to be able to make a, you know, actual decision on it. Because like he said, you know, that other one's got a lot more mechanicals to it, could end up in the long run costing us more money. And then in the long run, you know, I mean, just the amount of water in sewer, you know, that we have to, you know, treat versus the thing, what is the cost savings on either one of them would be nice to know.
I just get a minute. Brian can, can expand on this, but we've already, we've already designed and bid this and awarded contract for a recirc.
And we committed.
So I think we've made that decision.
Okay.
You know.
Change order.
Ding ding ding, there goes the money. We, we could red, uh, yes, request a proposal request for inserting a different design into the project. I believe it'd be, might be a deduct and everything, but then once again, if we did that and the contractor, Comstock was able to provide that and everything, we'd also look at our operational expenses added too. So not only due to your construction costs, we look at those operational. Once again, like I mentioned, uh, looking at our rates for our distribution supply of water, but then also our treating of water, our wastewater treatment plant are amongst two minimum operation costs we'd have to consider.
The water going to our plant out of that pool shouldn't be that hard to treat though. I mean, it's not, not like sewage.
Uh, Brian, is the water in this considered the same, uh, need to be of the same requirements as a typical swimming pool? Or where I guess I'm going is, could we put in a well and use untreated water and just go that route? And have a flow-through system where it comes out of a well, goes through this and flows into the river? And then there isn't any issue with chemicals and treatment and all of that? Or is that even not possible for some reason that I don't know?
I would say it's probably not possible. The DNR would not give you the permission to run a well and then run it straight into the river. You'd have to treat the water going into the river. So it, I mean, and water technology and treatment has moved a lot. So I think, you know, preservation of water is probably as much king as anything. And so I think, you know, if we have a recirculating system, we should be able to figure out how to make it work. I mean, as I say, technology's moved a lot on water treatment in the last, literally even in the last five years. So I think, I think, I, I, mechanical systems are, are expensive to operate. But I think we've got a lot better at doing them. I don't think you would, the DNR, that would give you even a permit to do that today, not for 5 million gallons.
Anything that's mechanical, you're gonna have problems with.
Yeah, yeah.
Somewhere along the line.
And then my guess would be too, is coming out of the well is hard water, which is gonna create rust. So then you gotta treat the water before it gets sprayed on the million dollar facility.
It's, the water is very, very hard. It, it's high in iron, high in arsenic, it comes out of the ground.
I remember that, uh, Mr. Chair, the last well the DNR did purpose to use to augment Lake Alice, a small well, existing well at the northeast, it was an existing well. And that, that appropriation permit, they only granted it for a year or two. So, um, they, the DNR's take on it is that it's not a, I guess, a appropriate way to, uh, use groundwater to, you know, for surface watering. Everything's not a good conservation effort as well, more so to protect the underlying groundwater.
How do you have a comment?
Yeah, just as recent as last year with the drought cycle that we're in, we had to impose water restrictions. So I would think that would be a purpose that would be deemed not necessary. So if we were to impose water restrictions again, we might have to shut down.
If we did not have a recirculating system.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be good, spend all that to have it and then not be able to utilize it, so. I guess I'm, what I'm hearing, I mean, it's, it's good discussion and, and, um, uh, certainly something that is good to bring forward and get some information on. I think, sounds like we've already kind of made a decision that's, that ship's sailed.
I just want to throw the information out that I've gotten from the guy that directly was involved with.
Yep. Thanks for the update, but I think what I'm hearing is we're just move as we already approved. Does that sound fair?
I mean, to go back now and redesign it would look foolish to.
Yep. Okay, alright. Thanks for the update, Brian. Item number five, Stormwater Management Ordinance.
Yes, thank you. Um, on September 14th, the MPCA provided us written responses in regards to their audit of the city's stormwater management program, referred to as MS4 as well. A majority of the MPCA alleged violations can be resolved with site plan reviews, construction inspections, and city code updates. The city has procedures and written forms to resolve these requirements of the MS4 permits. Since the response, alleged violations from the MPCA, approximately 13 pages of it, uh, we have responded to the MPCA with facts and circumstances to consider in its process for determining enforcement actions required for, in regards to their audit towards the city. So, uh, on the second page included in the memo, I've provided a list of city code updates. We're gonna have to, uh, update incorporate into our city code. And I've also provided a, a redlined version of, uh, chapter 152 that does have the city code updates in regards to this topic incorporated into the length, uh, into our city code. I can go through the detail if you prefer, or, um, just in general, they're just requesting just, uh, develop regulatory mechanisms for all kinds of sorts of things and everything as well. So like I said, I can go into the city till, or you can just, I'm requesting a motion directing the city attorney to draft a stormwater management ordinance revisions for chapter 152. And I'll open up to any questions you might have.
Thanks, Brian, for that quick update and go ahead, Scott, you got a question?
I got a couple of questions for you, Brian. As I've read through the, it's actually blue line, red line version, isn't it? Am I understanding that right?
Correct.
It was blue. Alright. The, the concern that I would have, whether it's this ordinance or any other one, is if we're putting a more significant burden on whoever's building something or developing something, and to what degree that's, you know, a heavy extra ask or anything. And there were a couple of paragraphs having to do with inspections and maintenance of records and, um, the, the timeframes for things and whatnot. That if I was a developer, I would think this is a lot to have to keep track of. For example, there's a line that says, "The owner shall maintain records and provide annual maintenance and inspection reports." And then this non-routine maintenance must occur every five years and inspections shall be done weekly, was on another point. And the date and amount of rainfall events greater than a half an inch must be recorded. Uh, do people actually do that? I mean, do you have contractors or developers that will keep inspection records and track rainfall amounts and things like that? Or is that?
And, here, Councilmember Kwame, yes, throughout the state. It's, uh, it's a very powerful program. And that's where, like I had mentioned, it's an unfunded mandate all the way from the federal government through the MPCA and Mesner through the MPCA. However, it lies on us because we're a municipality of over 10,000 people, population. Uh, we're required to enforce, be the enforcement action at the local level for this. So, um, my, and my, uh, general perspective on all this is I try to achieve minimum standards when it comes to new enforcement languages and everything. And that's before you write here is the minimum requirements that the MPCA is requesting we take on, or else they will be looking to let the, uh, damp, uh, taking enforcement action towards the city. And they have in some other communities as well. Uh, but you're absolutely right to answer your question. Some of these, yes, there's a lot of documentation. We try to streamline the process and everything. We're looking at new electronic software, all kinds of things. But I, I honestly, I do have a staff member that's pretty much dedicated to this program almost full-time.
And so as you talk about enforcement, is there some, what's the negative to the city if we don't do this? If we say, you know, we're just gonna do the minimum or less, does the fed or government or some other entity then come in and fine us? Or what, what happens to us then if we don't do what this is suggesting?
That's precisely what they can levy towards the city, fine.
And they have been in other communities.
They have been in other communities. And it's not just cities, uh, private contractors, companies, everything as well. So, um, there will be, not to change the subject and everything, but there's move for PFOS coming. Will be coming for the council in regards to new sampling that they're gonna require, not at our wastewater treatment plants and also at our local landfill. I don't, don't quite want to get into that yet, but we'll be coming before you in regards to that topic as well. So before you write out, just in regards to stormwater, there is a lot of record keeping, as I noted. And yes, the rainfall, everything, uh, we, there has been a lot of progress in regards to having standard boilerplates for documenting all these measures. But yes, uh, developers, but this is not just a Ferguson thing, this is throughout the state and countrywide in many instances, so. It's gonna be a unfortunate norm in some areas of construction.
The MPCA's got a lot of power.
Yes, I would agree.
And a lot of their mandates are unfunded. I mean, we have to fund what they want us to do. There's no state money.
So they, yeah, they don't provide us any resources to do what they're telling us to do. It does put a lot in your hands. Uh, the one line in here reads, "The city engineer shall retain enforcement powers for assuring adequate operation and maintenance activities." So I guess you get that big hammer to make this all happen. So, uh, it's interesting.
Somebody's gotta go to jail. Shouldn't be the city council.
He's got big shoulders.
Yeah.
Put good things in place and.
I think the basic is like, obviously, we don't have a choice as such. I mean, we have to update them in accordance with the request in the law, um, but it's how do we communicate it? Uh, I think the changes and communication is the bigger key. You know, so that, you know, going back to Councilmember Kwame's thing, it's like, you know, we, we want, we want obviously contractors to continue to do their work, but, you know, they have to understand that these impositions are, are a federal mandate, not a city mandate. And we don't want them to fall foul of, of the law either. So it'll be a good job for Gene.
I'm on it.
Yeah.
Well, we've been, as a city, I think, we've been subject to some criticism when it comes to being business friendly. Those kind of comments come up and it's like, hey, we didn't do this. We were forced to do this. And it just seems kind of odd that we have to vote to approve something that we don't have a choice. You know, we got a gun to our head, we've gotta do it. It's like, well, then why just, just do it then? Don't ask us to vote for it.
It's more or less a mandate. This is what we do.
Being that you mentioned it, do we have a request to, um, recommend?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista.
We've had all the discussion.
Yeah, it's kind of backwards, but eh, it's okay. That's how we do it sometimes. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, pull, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Off the hot seat now.
Item number six, Pebble Lake Golf Course Clubhouse HVAC System, Guy Taylor.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Um, with the opening of the Palmer's Restaurant at the Pebble Lake Golf Course, uh, it was evident that our air conditioning system out there was very inadequate. Uh, Pebble Lake Golf Club spent thousands of dollars this summer trying to repair them, get the systems back up and running so that it was semi-comfortable in the clubhouse. It's just shown to be just a money pit. So what's being proposed is the city front, uh, money, probably upwards of $50,000 to replace the systems, heating and air conditioning. And then Pebble Lake Golf Club would reimburse the city 50% of that cost over five years. Um, Palmer's is looking at potentially year-round operations, so it would be replacement of heating and air conditioning. So, um, we're recommending that this be, uh, entered into an agreement with Pebble Lake Golf Club and that we be able to use money that's been set aside in the golf course's, uh, budget and, uh, use it for this purpose instead of the siding project that we had been saving the money for. If, uh, it's acceptable, we're, we've already received one quote and we're seeking at least one more. And, uh, and we'll come back to you with the approval of whichever quote we, you'd like to look at. So Kevin is here too to speak to it if you'd like him to. But, uh, it was obvious in the clubhouse and then especially in the kitchen area, the staff in the kitchen were working in 100-plus degree temps many days this summer. So it's definitely a needed project.
I will offer that.
Thanks, Guy. I'll second that.
And, and I will, I will say that, that the system that they have out there has not been replaced in, I'll bet you, 15, 20 years. We've added, added a few things to the kitchen this last year, but the, the system, they've been patching on it for years and it's, it's time for a new system.
So, the motion by Jim and the second by Brent. And I just want to take an opportunity to, you know, I, I utilize that course and, um, the restaurant. And I think, um, just want to publicly note and thank Kevin for him and his staff and, and the city for working, really changed the face of, of, of the golf course. And I think there's a lot of people that come outside of the community that get to see the new, the new things happening out there. And so a lot of, a lot of exciting things are happening and a lot of youth are getting into the golf, which is awesome to see. I just have one question on, I don't think we've ever used this as, um, uh, year-round as far as the heating side. Are we comfortable with insulation and just making sure that we can, um, heat it? Or do we need to look at that pot?
Yeah, the siding project that we were looking at would have included insulation too. We know that it's inadequate. So, um, Pebble Lake Golf Club, knowing that too, is just gonna realize that they're gonna be paying more for heating the building, well, and air conditioning at this point due to delaying that project.
And that might be something down the road we can tackle. But again, back to my original point was, a lot of good things are happening out there. It's, it's fun to see and, and the, the experience for local residents and residents outside our community that come and play is pretty exciting. So come a long way in the last few years, so thank you for that. Any other questions, comments, or? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. That motion's carried. We good with that going on the consent?
Consent.
Yep.
Item number seven, Lake Alice Planning Discussion. Talking a lot about water tonight. Thanks, Kevin.
Your honor, uh, committee members, this is probably more about geese, but of course, that impacts water quality and all those things as well. But, um, I'm, I'm a placeholder on the agenda and I'm actually gonna turn it over to Councilmember Kwame. Um, the mayor and, and Councilmember Kwame have received some correspondence from a resident of Lake Alice. And there was some action items that this person was hoping the city would discuss. And I think Councilmember Kwame is prepared to, uh, propose some concepts this morning. So I'll just turn it over to him if that's alright.
Since I live right on Lake Alice, uh, and I've been involved with the Lake Alice Neighborhood Group that has met infrequently but somewhat regularly over the last several years, the people in that group and, and a couple of people in particular came to me saying, you know, can't we do something? And then they also got ahold of the mayor, as Andrew mentioned, and a letter was written with some specific questions regarding, you know, geese management, water quality management. And so the conversation now is at the point of, well, you know, what are we gonna do about it? And we've got a number of committees and a number of advisory boards and things like that already in place, uh, whether you're talking, you know, the golf board as we just heard from, or the bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, those kinds of things. And it seems like it would be appropriate for us to have a committee established to take a look at these issues surrounding Lake Alice and do the research and do some of the legwork and to accomplish some progress on some of these questions, um, you know, on a volunteer basis from a group that's interested and has a stake in the matter. And so to that end, I'd like to propose a motion that we create such a committee, uh, or that the mayor creates such a committee and then task that committee with, uh, looking at medium, or short-term, medium-range, long-range, uh, potential solutions regarding these issues of water quality and, and, uh, geese management initially. So that, I don't know if that motion came out very clearly. Want me to try that again?
Hey, I think it was pretty clear.
Okay.
You did a good job of that.
Could it be like a subcommittee within the Park and Rec or another committee?
I think it would almost have to be a subcommittee off, off the Park and Rec.
Or it would be that or natural resources?
Natural resources, yeah.
So at this, at this point in the conversation, I would expect the. So at this, at this point in the conversation, I would expect the conversation, you know, the topics to primarily be regarding water quality and management of the geese and those kinds of things that might, you know, we'd be checking with the DNR and with fish and wildlife and with all of the kinds of things that have to do with, you know, stormwater drainage and that kind of a thing. At some point in the future, it wouldn't surprise me if this group also then wanted to expand the conversation to other needs around the lake, whether it was, you know, utility reconstruction and all of the stuff that goes into Brian's department with the streets and everything. So whether it was specific to the park and rec or whether it at some point grows beyond that, I don't know. I think it could stand alone, but if it was to be a subcommittee under another area, that's, I'm not, you know, I don't hold one way or another, that's fine.
I just have a suggestion. So right now, the Natural Resources Advisory Committee, when they got codified, brought into the city, their membership was asked to reapply to be part of this, you know, the same group, but as part of the overall hierarchy of the boards and commissions. And currently, we don't have enough members for them to meet. So if, if there are interested members of this Lake Alice group who maybe have broader interest in natural resources overall, if they'd be willing to come and join the Natural Resources Advisory Committee, get that group back up and running, and then there could be a subcommittee of those members with the specific interest in Lake Alice that could continue to meet. Maybe then it could morph into its own thing, but it could solve two, maybe two issues at once.
I, I think that would be a workable option. I don't have a problem with that.
Go ahead, Bill.
And just as a reminder, and Brian, you'll probably help me. We did a, quite a bit of work on Lake Alice a number of years ago, looking at all these issues from stormwater management, the traps, all those kind of things. I remember we looked at a DNR permit, I think that was.
Water organization.
Was declined by, we weren't granted that by the DNR. So for this group, there's a bunch of work that was already done a number of years ago, so they wouldn't have to start at ground zero. Certainly pull what was put together and that may answer a lot of the questions already, so.
And I was going to ask that question. It, it was never probably an official Farmwise City Committee, but they had kind of a committee established. What were they called, like the Friends of Lake Alice or?
Neighborhood group, Lake Alice Neighborhood Group.
There you go.
And they still meet occasionally. I don't, and all of us have pretended.
So they're not, they're not.
Very likely will be a meeting, you know, soon, because often before Halloween, they'll want to get together and talk about, what are we going to do for Halloween this year? Because it involves a lot of traffic and parking and things.
Go ahead, Jim.
Do we have as many geese in town after Otterdale closed down the plant and the river freezes over? We don't, and I don't think a lot of them come back. So I think we're down on.
There was less geese this year on Lake Alice than previously.
Yeah.
I think it's a lot of the ones that, they've been a long, long time where they're wounded and they can't get out of here.
Yep. We, we have a couple on the golf course that are limping around.
There still are some around.
Yep.
Sorry, we have a second to the motion? To Scott's motion? To, okay. Do we have another discussion other, for the, for the Lake Alice case? Being underneath the N R A C?
I think that seems a positive fit.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Motion's carried. And did you have a follow-up or is that just, that's it?
That, I think that answers my question.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Lynn, for the reminder. I do not believe there's any additional items coming for us this morning. Just a couple announcements, October 17th, 5:30 here in the council chambers. We will be meeting on Monday night. On November 2nd, will be our next committee, the whole meeting, 7 o'clock in the chambers. And then a big reminder, November 2nd, we all know the leaves are falling off the trees. And so bag leaf pickup begins at 6:00 a.m. on November 2nd. Guy, does it go the whole week or just that day?
Just that day.
Just that day, so get your leaves bagged and out to the boulevard so we can pick them up for you. Claire?
Just a reminder that we have strategic plan meetings tomorrow. You're all on a committee. You should have been receiving calendar updates and invites.
It's in person.
It's in person, so please check, check your city email accounts. Jim, I sent it to your other account.
Okay.
I'd love to see you there, thank you.
All right. Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.